It's not six though yet, is it? Or is that clock so wrong? Is it six? We'll call the Tremont Planning Board Meeting of August 26, 2025 to order at 6:00 P. M. Roll call. We have Renee Hostin down there right with them, myself, Mark Good, Ben Harper way down there at the end. Hi, Ben.
Hey.
Our C. E. O., Angela Chamberlain, and members of the public. Beth Gott is not going to be here tonight, so I will take a motion to excuse her.
I still move.
With a second?
No, second.
Motion and second on table to excuse Beth Gott. All in favor? Thank you. The agenda looks good to me as presented, Ben. Would you like to make a motion?
Motion we accept the agenda as presented?
I'll second the motion.
Motion and second to accept the, adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor? Okay. And the minutes of July 22nd, I did, they look fine to me and accurate. Anybody see anything? If they didn't, I'll take a motion to approve them.
Make a motion we approve the minutes of July 22nd as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion and second to approve the minutes of July 22nd as presented. All in favor? Thank you. Okay. Okay, we have three public hearings here, and I'm gonna start with the first one, Temporary Sales Amendment. Open that at time. I don't have a watch, sorry.
Eighteen oh two.
Eighteen oh two. Six oh two. Okay. Okay. Well, the planning board, along with our C. E. O. has, have been working to identify issues with our ordinances, and that's why some of these amendments are, have come up. And the first one would be Temporary Sales Amendment. We found this is really was set up years ago for events like the backside glass, that sort of thing, very short-term things where a food truck might come in, where somebody might always want to sell a few T-shirts, that sort of thing. But it seems to be inadequate for what is actually occurring. This summer, we had, well, some folks were trying to do a farmer's market, for one thing, and it certainly didn't really qualify under what we have here. And then some other folks in town tried to do and were granted a permit for like a food truck on their property, and that was challenged by in a butter, and it went to the appeals board, and the appeals board overturned that permit, and it really, it really singled out the fact that these vehicles or these type temporary sales things, it specifically says itinerant in there, that they're supposed to be itinerant, i.e. going from place to place. And that wasn't the case there, and so we decided to take a look at this, and we worked quite long and considered different things and developed this. So I'll open this for public comment, I guess, unless any board members want to send it in. Nope, nope. Open it for public comment. Please identify yourself. If you want to comment. Okay, yes.
Hi, my name's Henry Elke. I operate Quietside Snacks in Tremont. This would change a lot of my setup for what I have right now, and I don't really want to make those changes. I think Angie and I have come to a resolution on it with setting up, I believe it was, commercial permit and building permit for it. But my concern is if I go to the state and it doesn't have, if it says takeout restaurant and I have, don't have mobile operation in it, that they'll turn it down, and then I'll have to add a lot of different changes inside the trailer.
So you've been granted, not by the C. E. O., by a previous C. E. O.,
Yes.
A one-year permit under the current temporary sale of food and merchandise, correct? Okay. I, I just talked about some of the standards within that definition or that part of the ordinance, and one of them's itinerant.
Yeah.
You understand the definition of itinerant, right? When's the last time the food, your airstream actually moved?
I could pack it up and move it in two seconds.
No, when, when, when's the last time it moved?
A few months ago. I hooked it up, moved it out of the way, moved it back.
To another location?
I work on stuff underneath.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
So, so you're not going from place to place?
No, no.
Okay, yeah, yeah. And I, so you don't know if you qualify under this change, first of all. And second of all, if you don't, you could come before the planning board with an application for a takeout restaurant, which is really what you are. You're open year-round. You don't move.
But I need state qualifications on it, and this is where I've set up. I'm, I understand if I have to shut down if things change. My concern is doing what has been proposed now, if it doesn't have the correct language in it, that I'll have to change the setup of the airstream to meet state qualifications then, which would cost probably twenty thousand dollars if in the morning.
Have you talked to the state on what that would be?
I have a meeting with them next month to go over different things. But that is going to be discussed then. But I'm trying to plan for after November and next year.
His current permit is good through?
November. Oh, my.
The permit you have now, he's asking about. When does it expire?
Through the state, I'm going until May through here. I'm not in the future.
Not state, for here, right? Did you mean the state permit or?
No, no, the town.
Yes, I understand he's asking about the town one. That I don't know. I never got a piece of paper on it when I came in and paid. I normally pay in August.
In August?
Normally, yeah, that's the time I do it.
So it'll expire August. It's a one-year permit.
Like I said, I never got the paper a hundred percent. I came in, paid, put it there.
They never issued you a permit?
I paid, I.
September 24th is when his full list would expire.
It would expire next September.
No, this September.
So it's expired?
September 24th.
Oh. Okay, oh, so it will expire. Yes, I'm chugging ahead here, mother lice, yeah. So next month it expires.
Yeah. A few weeks. So what are you, I'm just, first of all, I'll say, I think it's, I don't want to see that personally. I don't want to see that.
Yeah.
So what are you, what are you asking? I'm trying to understand, like, is there language you think that if we added to the, to the, to it would help you with the state?
Um, I think on the, the features on the building permit application I got from Angie, right now, we just wrote takeout restaurant on it.
Yeah.
If it said something about mobile on there, then that helps with the state. So that was more of my question, if I can get the wording in on that, because right now, we don't have a generator. We're hooked up to a well, and I prefer to stay that way, because I didn't generate, I don't think would be enjoyable for anyone.
So and why would you have to add a generator? Why would, I don't know all the.
In the amendment, I believe it said, had to be, that wasn't allowed for a plug in like what I have. And so right now, I can unplug everything, unhook and be gone less than a minute. And that needs to be for it, but now it would change it.
Why can't you, I mean, there's plenty of takeout restaurants around. I mean, we've got one right over here. So why, why can't you get that state approval for that?
Because if I go through a takeout place like behind Hanson's, which is not what I had set up originally in Tremont, I would have to even change the interior to then meet state qualifications for that. And I don't have any interest in doing that there. I want to keep it that way.
Do our rules require that it be able to move, or do they require that it actually be moved?
It, it says, you mean, current ordinance?
Whatever, the itiner.
It's the itinerant part, okay?
Sure.
There's precedent.
We sell from mobile or movable vehicle carts or stands, but does it, does it require, are we, are, are you gonna go check and see if people have moved? Does it mean, is that part of it, have to shut down and move? Is that, how do you, how do you enforce that?
Yeah, I mean, that is, I mean, if that's the requirement, then they have to meet it, but yes, it's very hard to.
It's hard, and I can, you can see a situation where someone would say, well, okay, they would shut down one week a month, move it, and then come back and say, oh, there you go. Like, how do you, so, and when you have situations like that, it doesn't make sense to me, because it's so easy to gain. So I, I guess, I think the fact, it, it is mobile. I mean, it, it's all you're asking that we, we would put mobile or something on it? Is that what you're asking?
I think for what I need for the state is that I just need to know if I can put mobile on there, because then if I go to them and they say, oh, no, that doesn't work, you'll have to do these changes, then I want to check my interior.
What do you have permanently, what's, what are you plugged into there? Are you plugged in a power?
Yeah, I'm plugged in.
Are you even plugged, right?
I can re-plug in, I can unplug. I'm hooked up to a tank, and.
A holding tank, right?
Yes, correct.
I remember that.
Is that just gray water?
Just gray water. I, my original plan was to put a porta potty in there, but from my understanding too, the new changes would remove that as well. Which I don't really care about that, because I don't have it there right now. I just find that it.
Any, any other public comments, or I guess?
I have a question.
Mackenzie.
Mackenzie, do it. Why are we making it so hard for Henry?
That's a great question.
Well, we're not making it hard for Henry. We're trying to.
Well, I feel like we are, right? Like, I understand that new standards need to be set, because food trucks or whatever could become a new thing in our town, and I understand we do have to get ahead of that. But why can't he keep doing what he's doing? I hate to see Henry spend all his time and money jumping through all the hoops that you're throwing in front of him, and do everything that you've asked him to do, and then still be told, sorry, I am back up.
One could argue that his permit was issued in error, because it doesn't meet the standards of what he's actually, uh, was given a permit for.
But isn't that an argument for a past code enforcement officer?
I'm not gonna comment on
Yes.
the past performance of any code enforcement officer. It's okay.
What's the part? What's the part?
But we do have, the, we do have precedent in the appeals board, which found that that sort of thing did not fit what we currently have in the ordinance.
Sure, but I don't think Henry's trying to be the newest takeout, I like, right? I mean, he wants to be a food truck or a food trailer. I don't think he's trying to be like Hanson's or the other takeout places in town. And I just feel like we're not, we need to be welcoming business, and I feel like that's not what we're up to.
So are you suggesting we should make an exception for Henry?
Yeah, maybe.
And, and that's it?
Yeah, I guess. I mean, he's.
I don't think we can do that.
Are there any other food trucks that I really know of?
What's that? There are no other food.
So why do we think, why do we think that, that he, you said he doesn't comply with this year in error? Why, why would it have been issued in error? Because he's plugged into a brake tank or something? Is that it? Is that the part?
I think the itinerant thing. He's not moving.
I don't, I'm not buying that. I don't, I'm not buying that. I think as long as it's mobile, because you can game that. You can, you can, I, I think that has to do with the nature of the structure. As long as it can be moved, then it's mobile. You know, if, and if you're gonna require itinerant, like, what does that mean? Like, you gotta, so you gotta have standards. It's okay. You know, you've gotta be there only two months out of the year. Like, what's itinerant mean? I think if you're gonna say, you know, it has, it needs to move, then you, what you invite is people doing something like, okay, I'll be open for the last three weeks every, every month, but the first week, I'm gonna move it down the road. And there I meet the, and then you meet it. And that does, it, that, it's just not, it's not an enforceable, you know, it's just not enforceable.
But, but we, don't we say that in what we're proposing?
Where, where is itinerant defined? Is it defined? Does it say you've got it?
We, we don't have it, we don't have it in our ordinance definitions, so then we go to the dictionary.
Yep.
And Merian Webster.
Yep.
So moving place to place. I mean, the one example is like an itinerant, itinerant preacher, okay, who goes from church to church.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, the, the way it is now, I mean, Mackenzie, you could wake up tomorrow morning and find a restaurant in the house next door.
Sure, sure.
Without it ever coming before the planning board, and you don't mind that.
I'm not, I don't know. I just, I feel like he's been doing his thing for several years now, and it's unfair for the town or the planning board or whoever to tell him, you can't do that anymore. I mean, I understand going forward, yes, we have to have different rules and things like that, but, I mean, you keep talking about this definition. Can you move it two feet this way and then three feet this way? Does that count?
No, that's not itinerant.
All right, other people have commented on it quietly.
And we talked about grandfathering, you know. I was against it in principle, and I'll tell you why. And I'm open to it now, because frankly, it's crazy what's going happening. I didn't. I think the, the challenge that you could run into with grandfathering is usually grandfathering, it runs with the land. It's, it's a, it's a condition that runs with the land. It's not something that runs with an individual annual permit, because you run into issues where, let's say, you know, they want to sell the whole thing, and another person comes in and wants to run it. Are they grandfathered to? I don't know. Because it doesn't really, it's, it's a permit. It's not, doesn't run with the land. And what happens if, you know, they don't apply one year? Does it stay in perpetuity even if you take a year off? I don't know. So that's why I was, but frankly, if that's the only way to get through it, I'm willing to do it. It's just kind of, it's just kind of a wonky thing to do on an annual permit. I saw, but I.
Angie, what do you think about grandfathering?
Well, the issue here is that if this was just a one-time approval, he would be grandfathered, no matter how many times you change the ordinance, he would be allowed to continue operating the way he was approved. The problem is, is he has to register every.
Every year.
So you have to follow the rules that are in place for that particular year. And I know we talked about this, because I said I thought, you know, it was important to be thoughtful to the person who has this use in town. There's only one. We're not talking about dozens of these that would be grandfathered or protected. But it doesn't feel fair to say, well, because you have to register every year, you don't get any protections, and we can keep moving the line. So I would prefer to see you put something in that says, you know, if you have a permit in place, it's valid, you can continue following the same rules that you followed at the time you would have issued your permit.
Yeah, I think we'd have to say something like, if you have a permit that was validly, you know, granted in the rules at that time, and you maintain that permit, you know, as long as you maintain that permit, you get to keep the permit. I mean, that's how you'd have to do it. You'd have to be that permity. I mean, they'd have to keep it, because once you don't do it, you kind of break the.
Yeah, I understand.
You know.
And I'm interested in going down the route that Angie mentioned to me, but sort of like this.
Which is takeout restaurant, right?
Which is keeping it the same way it is, but going under a different permitting for, for land use and.
So this is where I don't, so is it, when you say different permitting, do you mean with the state or with the town?
With the town.
The town.
But my concern is that that would match with the state.
Yeah.
And then that will cost me anywhere from twenty to thirty thousand probably to.
And so the permitting with the town you want to do is takeout?
I wanna, Angie, maybe.
Yeah, so.
So it's takeout?
It's a takeout restaurant.
Then the takeout's not mobile, right? Is that a mismatch? Might get a lawyer, I don't know. I, I mean, yeah, it's, it's a.
Yeah, it's like the other takeout restaurants we have in town now, they follow, they're not following this set of rules. I mean, he's really truly operating in a permanent manner. He's not.
Yeah, okay.
It's not food truck like we envisioned here.
And then it's just a one-time permit, but if he doesn't keep doing it.
Well, it sounds like there's kind of two choices then. There's the grandfather path, which I don't think, then you wouldn't need to change how you operate with the town. And you, you avoid the problem with the state.
Yeah.
And then there's the, we say, okay, you can put mobile on it.
Yeah.
And try to.
That would be the preferred route, and then.
That's the preferred route?
For grandfathering, just as say, the way I am now, and then further down the road, if I ever need to make changes or grow, then I would go under the.
So, let me see if anybody else has any.
Yep. Any other more comments before?
Did the, does the permit list the requirements of what he is supposed to have? Is that listed on the permit?
For the state?
For, no, for the town, with what you're doing now.
He doesn't know, he doesn't have a permit.
I was like, did he get a permit, apparently?
I can't even.
He paid it.
Well, as long as you pay the money, it's all. But does the permit actually have a list of requirements that he's operating under?
No.
Maybe it would be good to leave that on, put that on the permit, so that if he keeps renewing it, his standards won't change, but we may change for someone else that's coming in, so that would be grandfathered.
I just have a comment, thinking about it, I'm just, so why?
Could you identify yourself, please, Greg?
Greg Johnston, a member of the public. Why wouldn't you apply to the current permit, remain itinerant before November, and then you would have a year under the current permit, whether it was, if the next summer, to figure out which avenue was best?
Yeah, I'm in.
Then you would see if it flies in November. You'd also take into consideration, maybe the board's considering an allowance and grandfathering, and.
Yeah, I suppose we could have the grandfather piece later if we want to go that route. I don't know. Yeah.
October 38th, November.
You know, grandfather, grandfathering is not a good route to go.
The shame would just be setting up in a town, starting a business there, and then five years later, having to.
No, I understand.
Move on that complete setup, because.
We're not against you, okay, just we've run into these problems, and we're trying to solve them through, you know, changing in the ordinance, and we don't think the current standards here in the temporary sale of food and merchandise is adequate for what's actually happening.
Yes, and I understand that. My hope is that you can understand my concern with changes being made to my place when I didn't expect those changes in Tremont, and I could go somewhere that's much busier, and the revenue would show on that, but I like it where it is, where it's placed. Everything was set up to code on that, or I asked and was told, okay.
Do you own, do you own the property where you are?
I don't, my family doesn't, but it can be transferred to my name if need be.
Okay, what do we need to do to accomplish this?
Take, we need to take a lot more comments first.
Thirty more comments, yeah. I mean, that's first, just get all the comments.
I, you know, Henry, you know, where I'm really confused is you're talking state regulations, and we don't know anything about what that's required there.
Isn't it?
Frankly, I don't understand why you can't meet the state requirements.
Well, he doesn't know what the state requirements are.
I mean, why you have to have mobile on there?
No, I've read the state requirements. I, I know those. The issue is, if I'm going as a takeout place on those papers, my state papers are the mobile unit. And right now, the current setup of the trailer meets that. They don't require hold intakes inside like that, as long as I can attach it to the back of it or have setups that meet or can help.
So what would you have to do to actually meet the state requirements for a takeout restaurant?
I said twenty, about twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty, thirty thousand, I wouldn't even consider.
No, no, hold on, but, okay, what does it entail? I don't want a dollar figure.
New hood vent system, fire safety compression systems. I would then need to have bathrooms. I would need to tear up, to set the gone property, put a new one in. I would need to spend a lot of money. I can email a detailed list to you. I can send it all over, but it won't happen on that property. I just won't do it, because
It wouldn't make sense.
I can go somewhere else and make a lot more money.
It wouldn't make sense.
Right now, as it is, it wouldn't. And the concern is also just doing business knowing this change, because it, it is frustrating, and I would like to do a business in Tremont, sort of where I do everything.
But if you went somewhere else, you'd have to meet the standards of their ordinances there, so you, you don't know whether they're gonna do that, meet those either.
Yes, but I would set up a whole new spot. I would pay for it. And I have property other places on the island where I can set up. The property isn't the issue. It's, this is what I have set up here. Right now, the dollar amount coming into me meets what I put into it, but if I have to put in thirty thousand dollars.
It won't, it won't make sense, yeah.
Not making sense.
The juice won't be worth the squeeze, Mark. His overhead's gonna be completely different if you're not gonna get the run.
Yeah, it's completely different, so I might as well go to northeast and set up a takeout restaurant.
Good luck.
I've been in contact. Thank you.
I don't think I have a problem. I'll be bummed if you, but God.
Yeah. I'm sorry for the confusion.
Yeah, the question I would have is whether, you know, if your permit's up, whether you'll be granted a permit again.
Well, the rules haven't changed yet.
No, the rules haven't changed, but there is the whole precedent there. That's, you know, I think he's been lucky that he doesn't have a, in a butter who's challenged, is concerned about the project and hired a lawyer to fight it.
Yeah, that seems to be how it works around here, Neil. I agree.
I'll just send him to have a lawyer.
Seems to be how it works.
Yes, Jamie.
Jamie, very low. I just, I feel like we need to make sure we remember that we are a small town. We, if we want a year-round population, we want a sustainable community, then we have to help promote business. I think that, you know, someone like Henry has been operating with zero issues. There's never been complaints to the town. I think that trying to, to make obstacles in front of him is, is just not, not a very good direction for the town to be going. I think that we are supposed to be promoting someone who wants to do business in this town, not encouraging them to move their business to another town. And I think that's something that seems to have been forgotten in the last few years, and that's just my opinion, what we should be, the direction we should be headed as a town.
Is that where he, is that in the zone in the plan, the comprehensive plan that's tapped for development or something like that? I don't remember where he is over there. You know, in the comp plan, we.
It's just residential business, so.
No, it's, it's still.
Yeah, so, yeah. Yeah, I don't think there's anything specific about that. Yeah. No, we're not, we're not targeting him, okay? This, what we're proposing here is for other projects, okay? Is there a workaround? I don't know. Maybe the grandfathering thing is, is a workaround. And, and we're not discouraging business. I don't think this planning board has ever discouraged business in this town.
No, I just think that, you know, someone who's been operating without any issues, I would think there would be a way to work with them to, you know, keep them from having to close down. I think that's just a, that's a lose-lose for the town, yeah.
Mike, were you gonna say something?
I, I just live up the street. I'm going to Butter, but I'd much prefer to have a small airstream than a full-size restaurant. I mean, it's nice. You can do down there in the fall, on a cold day, sit next to the fire, have a cheeseburger, and I just think it's a nice, it's a nice setup. I personally don't really think we should change much of anything until we have a better, better footing on it, maybe some legal advice, because we really don't want to take a business and pull the rubber right up from underneath them, and I feel like that's what will happen. Even if it's unintentional, that's what's gonna happen.
Anybody else? Kathy, I saw you had your hand up there.
Most of my answers were, my, my questions were answered. I, I would like to, um, Kathy Thurston. At the very least, um, would it be possible to consider something, any existing businesses, um, that would fall under this? Maybe be granted a three-year, four-year time period to come into compliance? With new. I mean, if you don't like the grandfathering forever, ever, or whatever. I just wonder if the board can't. We're, I think we're only talking about one business that comes under this possibly?
Henry, what can't you meet? If this were to pass today, what can't you meet?
I would not be able to have my well hook up, as I understand. I would have to unhook from electrical. As I understand, I think my fence or sign would have to come down. Um, so then I would have to start adding in the tanks to the airstream. There was a number of things I'm just not interested in having that type of setup.
So you wouldn't have that quite side jump anymore?
Exactly. And to go.
You ever get a permit for that?
What was that?
That, you're, there's client side side.
It's another one back there, Mark.
Where, I didn't see, oh, yes, hi.
I should, here, I'd like to continue with Kathy's. Could the.
Could you speak up please?
I'm trying, working on it.
You can, you can walk up here a little closer.
Could the businesses that are in town as they are now, like his and others', could they be grandfathered now until they're sold to somebody else? And then that person would have to deal with whatever.
Well, that, he's the only one.
Well, there are other businesses in, there are, are there a possibility of other businesses in town? I don't know if there's other businesses in town. But could that be in, in the laws, in the rules, or whatever you call these things? Could it be, if you have a business right now in town, as it is, could it be grandfathered until it changes, until it changes again?
Well, so most, so, and this goes back to my earlier, uh, mo- most grandfathering is something that runs with the land, attaches to the land, and it stays with the land. And so long as that use is there, it doesn't matter who owns it, it stays with the land. You don't typically see.
But if the land was sold, excuse me, if the land was sold, how many sold this?
Yeah, well, so let me switch. Now we're talking about permits, right? That's a different thing, because it's not, it's a permit for a use on, on land. You typically don't see those grandfathered because you run into issues. They're not, you know, but I, but frankly, I'm willing to go either way here now. Either you can put mobile on there for all I care, or we, we could do a grandfather, and you could probably craft one that's direct, you know, it's enough. Like, you would say, it's gotta be the same licensee, this, you know, same permutee, I guess it would be. It's gotta be every year. You skip a year, you're done. It's gonna be continuous. And so long as they did that, you could say, you know, as long as you comply with the rules at that time, maybe it's okay. I'd be open to that. We haven't got to that point in discussion, and I, but I, but I think that would be, or a ti- like a time-bound one, I don't know. I'd probably just let it, as long as they kept paying, let it do it. In the perpetuity, I guess. Um, but, so I think that's the, but, because we're, I think we're looking right at this here. I don't know other businesses. That'd be kind of a.
We're looking at this right now.
Yeah.
But it needs to be in the rules for somebody that comes into town tomorrow.
Yeah. Yeah. That's a tough one, but.
I would think businesses here that are already, you know, stable in the, in the situation they are now, should stay here for this community. I mean, it's hard to get people to come here and live and have a year-round viable, um, business. And people love their food, they're kind and welcoming, and.
And what else would Tremont give us?
Campgrounds.
Short-term rentals.
Short-term rentals and campgrounds.
Would you have to have short-term rentals to be able to live in this town? Because taxes are so high.
Any other comments?
I just don't even know why it's being brought up after being in business for four years.
I'm sorry.
Why, why is it being brought up now? I didn't thought it would be in here earlier. If he's been in business for this amount of years, why is this even in the discussion?
The discussion isn't really about him. It's about, our ordinance as it is, it's not adequate for what's happening, okay?
But should it have been?
You found that out yourself.
I wouldn't go there.
Appeals board, what did the appeals board say to you?
A, Ash?
Let's not.
Okay, I don't wanna get into that. Okay, I'm sorry.
It sort of is about me on that though, because the only current business being affected by it is me, so I do want to adjust the wording on that a little bit.
You're the only one, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, okay.
Um, because I think that does matter.
My point was, what we're proposing is not specifically aimed at you, okay? You do fall in, yeah, yeah.
But I, what you said established business on it, so I just don't want.
It does affect you, yes, okay. Any other comments?
Why'd you even start this ordinance when there aren't any, any food trucks coming in?
I just explained at the beginning, okay, we've had a farmer's market, okay?
No food trucks.
Which was not quite, quite, there was no regulation surrounding that, except for the temporary sale of food and merchandise. This was basically set up for a food truck to come down to the town dog on the backside blast and sell a few burgers and hot dogs, okay, or whatever. And, and somebody to sell a few T-shirts, okay? It, it, there's no parking regulations here or anything like that. So, we were just trying to, uh, because of the fact that there was going to be that, and we know that there was already a food truck that did not get, got a permit, which was overturned by the appeals board because it did not meet the standards within this part of the ordinance. That's why we started talking about it.
The, um, farmer's market?
Yeah.
They would have to get, if this passes, they would have to get permits also?
Yeah.
Like sell whatever.
They'd get a permit, yeah.
So as far as I can see, these people that have yard sales, roadside flower stands?
No, no, that's, nothing, nothing in here about that.
Not in the market, firewood?
Will that be affected down the road though?
What is the difference?
In five years, if I set up a little flower stand?
If you what? Set up a firewood stand?
I'm sorry, I.
I know, I understand.
I have a few businesses in Tremont, I can serve as changes down the road, everything.
What happens five years? I have no idea. Okay, that, no, we're not, no one's trying to do that, okay? Here, did you pick up, we have copies available over there of, like, saying exactly what we're proposing here. I suggest you pick it up and read it.
I read all of those.
Yeah.
But you were missing points, isn't it? Cause I'm, I'm not sure where the confusion is on that though. I recommend that someone else read it, but.
You mean, you're talking about your case in particular? That's why I ask you. I just, what's.
Yeah.
You're, so what?
I'm all set up. I think I understand what I know.
Any more comments in the back there? I'm sorry.
This is Patty, didn't you? It just seems like everything we're talking about, playing around with mobile takeout would be complicated things. If really the grandfathering of him, he's the only one in town, I think the changes you're doing sound good for others, probably, that come along.
Right.
It's all to make it, so is there a way for him to keep doing it? Can there be a focus more on grandfathering? I don't know if it was granted to him and would have really met every detail of the ordinance now and at that time. But yet, it was granted. It's been going on in Tremont. Is there, could there be more effort made? Is, is there a way to grandfather some or?
Question I have is, do we have to actually do anything about grandfathering, or is he grandfathering?
He's not.
He wouldn't be grandfathered.
No, I've already asked the town attorney and he said.
You, you asked it?
Yes.
You asked who?
The town attorney.
It's, it's usually.
James Collier?
Yes.
It's not, you don't see that with an annual permit, but we can do, we could create that, but we don't.
Yeah, that's. And how would we create that? What specifically? We'd have to get an attorney to draw something up?
No, I think you can, you can put something in here under probably your standards for, uh, mobile units. You could add something that says, um, anybody who has a valid permit in place as of today would not be subject to these requirements. They would continue to follow the same rules that they followed when they got their last one.
Yeah, maybe grandfather it so long as they continue with the business, continue to buy a permit every year.
You could say it can't be transferred to another person. It can, when you remain with the same owner.
And, uh, would it have to be today, or would it be upon the adoption of?
I would say it would be better to pick today, so that your date.
Yeah, so people don't come rushing in to do things.
Yeah, and that would be completely opposite of what you're trying to do. Yeah, you would say today, so you have one food truck that has a permit right now. They would not be subject to this.
Yeah.
Why don't we finish out the public hearing and then, is it, what's the process here? I feel like.
Well, well, more, we'll, any more comments? You know, we'll let people comment as long as.
I just, I'm trying to understand what's wrong with not advancing it at all, just dead in the water, just. You know, we don't need, we don't need to deal with this right now. It's, well, what's, what's the worst that could happen?
Doesn't it go to a vote?
And if small businesses get to start food trucks that couldn't afford to start a restaurant, multi-million dollar restaurant? I mean, that's where we're at right now. I mean, there's a good opportunity for him to start a restaurant, take out, whatever you wanna call it, food truck, where he might not have, otherwise been able to afford to. And for a small town, that's the sort of thing we should be looking for. Those are the sort of people we should be looking out for.
Hundred percent agree.
And he's, he's open in November. Nobody's open in November. You gotta, you gotta drive to, you gotta drive to Ellsworth to get a burger in November. I mean, I, I think you should just shoot the whole thing down. I mean, it's really, I think it's a waste of time. I think it should be dead in the water.
I agree, hundred percent.
Any other comments? Hearing none. I'm gonna close the public hearing, I guess, and then we'll discuss. Does that make sense? Okay. Time, what time is it?
Six forty-three.
Six what, forty-three? Okay, we'll close the public hearing on temporary sales, uh, six forty-three.
So would the grandfathering be, would that be included in this amendment to be placed on the ballot?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be. The whole, the whole thing would be, yeah.
All right.
I have no objection to that, I guess, if it, as long as it's properly.
Me either. That's the only way forward. I mean, I, I think it's like, I do think, yeah, I, I'm fine with that.
I'll make a motion that we recommend the amendment entitled Temporary Sales as amended be placed on the town November fourth, two thousand twenty-five ballot. With the amendment that any food trucks that are lice permitted at this point be grandfathered from this point on.
I'll second that.
Okay, my question is, is he correct in saying food truck?
Um, I mean, right now, they're, they're not really called food trucks. It's temporary sales.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so change it just to temporary sales. I would, I would change my amendment to say temporary sales.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table to amend the temporary sales land use ordinance that proposed to say that anyone with a valid permit as of today, correct? Uh, can continue to, but how about, uh?
I would say under the existing rules today.
Under the existing rules today, okay.
I'd say provided that they, you know, renew that permit. Annually. And provided further that, that this extends only to the named permutee. Cause then you, you know.
Did you get that?
Yeah.
Could you read that back please?
Sum it up. So anybody who has a permit as of today for temporary sales, um, would fall under the existing provisions of today. They have to renew annually and their permit is non-transferable to any other.
Yes.
I'll spruce it up.
Okay. So we have motion, second table for that. Any further discussion on that? Okay, a call for a vote, all in favor? No one's opposed, okay.
Give him a burger. Check your free burger.
I know, I know. I'm thinking about the French fries, right?
Okay. I wish I wore a watch. I'm sorry, folks. Someday maybe our selectmen will get us a clock that works in here.
Six forty-seven.
Yeah, gonna open the public hearing on the official zoning map and zone criterion, criteria amendment at six forty-seven. Angie, you wanna briefly explain this?
So, um, yeah, there were, um, there are several areas in Tremont that are along protected resources. And the shoreline zone extends beyond two hundred and fifty feet, which is not typical. And DEP has said we shouldn't be applying shoreline standards beyond two fifty. So, the map's been amended to change all of those areas to be limited only to two hundred and fifty feet um, of water, wetlands, um, any protected resource. There were a few places on the maps where the wetlands were incorrectly colored. So instead of saying that they were protected by shoreline zones, it said something like residential. So those colors were corrected. Bass Harbor Headlight, um, was included in part of the park property and taken out of any zoning. And, um, the other section was, there's an area, um, of the, um, commercial fishery maritime activity zone that is almost entirely residential homes. And homes are not allowed in commercial fishery maritime activities. So we extended the harbor shoreline zone, um, south towards the shore road in that area so that those properties would not be non-conforming.
Yeah, they're non-conforming right now, so it brings them into compliance.
They don't need to be grandfathered.
Not anymore.
Any comments, questions?
I could hardly hear what she was saying.
Did you get one of these?
I've got everything, but I don't, I don't know what number you're on because I couldn't hear you.
Were in the land use, uh, officials. We're in the land use, official zoning map and zone criteria one. Ms. Chamberlain has a very detailed, easy to understand. There is a map.
Thank you, this is my copy.
This is the map here, the new, this is the proposed map, yeah.
Were all the homes that were in that zone that are non-conforming, were they all there? I don't know, or were they built perhaps or?
No.
And they're not, and were made in?
Can't say.
Yeah, it goes back so many years.
Yeah.
We have no idea.
I have no idea.
It goes back so many years. It's just, it's, it's the map, the way the, where the zoning was done. We think they were, at some point in time, when someone drew the map, they, I don't know, didn't think about how they were drawing it. We don't know, but we're just going to fix it. Yeah.
But it wouldn't be called spot zoning.
No, because you're extending the district, you're not just making a small section, something like.
No, we're not spot zoning, if that's what you're getting at.
Well, you're making a house conform instead of non-conforming, so that's.
But it's not just that one section, it's other areas of town, too.
We presume that at the time they were built, that they were, you know, in accordance with.
What's that?
I said, we presume that at the time that they were built, they were in accordance with, you know, they were perfectly permitted, but we don't know that, but.
Well, many of them have probably been there.
They're for a long time.
And if there were some new ones, maybe they weren't, maybe they weren't supposed to be permitted, and they were, because why would you assume you couldn't?
We hop in on the Shore Road?
No, like up by Hopkins Hill, that section, western.
By Ben's house.
Yeah, my house.
Okay.
You may have to recuse yourself on this, Ben. Any other comments or questions? It's gonna be an easy one.
Yeah, it actually makes sense.
Okay, hearing nothing, I'm going to close the public hearing at, Mr. Watchman?
At six fifty-two.
Six fifty-two, okay. Six fifty-two, and we'll need a motion to send this on be placed on November fourth, twenty-fifth, November fourth, two thousand twenty-five ballot. Ben, you want to do that?
I made the motion, the amendment, amendment entitled Shoreland Zoning Multiple Articles be placed on.
Oh, no, no, official zoning map and zone criteria, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Ben's legal, please.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, yeah. It's going to be placed on the November fourth, two thousand twenty-five ballot.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion and second to recommend that the amendment entitled Official Zoning Map and Zone Criteria be placed on the November fourth, two thousand twenty-five ballot. Any discussion here, our board members? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, four zero. Okay, now, we've got shoreline zoning and multiple articles amendment. Catchy title there, Angie. Okay, we're gonna open this at, I'm gonna guess, six fifty-five.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four, open six fifty-four. And this is basically minor revisions, correction of spelling, capitalization errors, removal of superfluous language, relocation of specific provisions to make, or to more, to more appropriate sections of the ordinance and the expansion of footnotes in Table one, okay? Angie, you want to briefly explain this, please?
Do you want me to go one by one through each of these or? Kind of your own, go out of them.
It's pretty clear cut, but.
And I think the biggest piece is that our ordinance has to be in compliance with the state mandatory shoreline zoning requirements, and we're not, we're deficient in a lot of areas. So in order to be compliant with DEP's requirements, we have to make all these changes. So many of them are required by them. There's lots of changes to clearing and removal of trees, hazard trees, changing just some language on how we measure non-conforming expansions. Just go through everything.
And some of these things are to bring it in compliance with the DEP regulations, guidelines, whatever.
They're required. I also made a lot of minor changes, things incorrect spelling, capitalization. And then when I got to the zoning districts, they were all sort of disorganized. And so I have reorganized them all into one format, so they all look the same. The requirements are in the same layout. Didn't change the rules, it just made them easier to find. There were some inconsistencies in some of the places where we have a land use table, said one thing, but then another section of the ordinance said something different, so those were aligned with one another. I made some changes to some definitions. One family residential, two-family residential were actually new definitions. We didn't define those, but yet we use those words throughout the ordinance. There were some minor modifications to permit application and review procedure. And I think that's kind of it. There's a lot in this, but a lot of the shoreline was all throughout the ordinance. And so as I was working on sections, I thought, well, now's a good time to fix, you know, some of the other minor stuff that was in there. I actually do have one change that I'm hoping you will make on page forty-four. At the top of the page, under Q.
Page forty-four, okay.
Site plan and development requirements is crossed out, that should not be crossed out.
Hold on.
I'm not believing that.
Not even there yet.
So we're keeping it?
Yeah, it should not be scripted in Q on that page forty-four.
Forty-four?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So I changed the wording for communication towers to wireless telecommunications facilities. And then for some reason, the next sentence is scripted and it shouldn't be.
Okay. Just want to say something for the one selectman that's remaining here, too, is, that remains, is that Angie has really done a bang-up job of, of going through the ordinance and stuff and, and finding things that should have, need to be changed and, and inconsistencies and things like that, so.
Couldn't agree more.
We have, we applaud her for that.
The whole job.
Yeah, 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 so.
So beneficial will be enough.
Yeah.
Any comments, questions? Yes, Sarah?
I would just like to third that comment because the Sustainability Committee spent quite a bit of time going through these land use ordinances. And they're so much better organized now, so.
Angie, know what to do next?
I'll lose lost.
Do you want to close?
Well, I, I'm waiting to see if anybody wants to comment, I guess not, or have a question, I guess not, so.
Fifty-nine.
I'll close at what, six fifty-nine?
Yeah.
Close the public hearing on the shoreline zoning, multiple articles amendment, six fifty-nine, okay.
I'm gonna make a motion to correct page forty-four and make sure that we do not delete site plan development requirements under, oh God, Article eight, subsection B two Q.
Renee?
Oh, I'll second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the table.
I'm just fixing the.
You know, to amend the land, shoreline zoning and multiple articles ordinance to remove the strikeout of site plan development requirements Q. That's on Article eight, B two Q, right? Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, now we need a motion to send this on to, as amended, onto the ballot.
I'll make a motion, the amendment, amendment entitled Shoreland Zoning Multiple Articles As Amended Be Placed On The November Fourth, Two Thousand Twenty-Five Ballot.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table to recommend that the amendment entitled Shoreland Zoning and Multiple Articles As Amended Be Placed On The November fourth, two thousand twenty-five ballot. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All right. Okay, thank you for this. Okay, new business. MDI Property Maintenance and Management. Okay, Greg or Mike here, you want to briefly say what you're proposing here?
You guys have, we're here for a brief discussion board, it's very helpful to understand the project is mighty, had approved the five duplexes. The code officer explained before that the two that actually got built were using the main entrance to this development. And that was not what the plan intended, that was a progression of financing, construction in a section with a road, which now firm way, just isn't completed. So the proposal is allow the two units that are there to use the entrance, which is permitted and acts as a business. But we propose some demarcations, basically you have staff that comes, but making an esplanade separates the drive, some striping. And that will allow the two units to be built until you can get, think of order to finish the rest of it. And I think you'll, you'll notice in the package that, you know, if you've ever gone by, it's a pretty well-signed place. It doesn't, it doesn't feel like any dangerous place, you've never been in there, the people come in and they, they leave. And so that, that's the proposal, and this is the modified plan. I did provide language, and if you guys need to change and say, okay, well, we'll do this until the rest is built up. I put that in as something you can look at and say, well, does that make sense or not? Really is to bring in clients for those two duplexes that are built to continue to use the main entrance with my improvements that sort of demarcate what happens. But as you probably all drive by there, it doesn't feel like a dangerous place, but I just think that it would guide people in there, and I think it would be safely, so.
Just with lines?
Lines, and if, if you look in the package, there are a plant and esplanade and a divide between there and sort of where the park closes.
I did see that, and I didn't quite understand. You want to point that out on the plan here?
Uh, yeah, if, there's a, in the package itself, Mark, there's a, there's a blow up of that area. Did you receive the, the letter with the application? A couple more pages, yes, right?
Okay, the letter, yeah, okay, and then I go to photos of signs.
Yeah, keep going.
Then I then I don't have anything, except for a plot plan that we approved already. Okay, right here, okay, maybe you mean this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, so striping and divide there, the entrance is plenty wide, it's greater than eighteen feet. But also he does have several signs to say there how to get those units in. Those folks are making it there now, but I think that's a betterment than, than to bring the, bring the flat, sort of.
It's as much for me, and although what we have going there is, is for you guys, it's helpful for us to, just to clean things up a bit.
So I don't see anything here, a divider. Step, show me on here.
Well, I can show you here. So you have this is where the mulch is stored, right?
Yeah.
Do you have the main entrance?
Yeah.
We're gonna stripe the entrance, that's what it says in the letter, we're striping the entrance.
Yeah.
And we're building the esplanade along there that separates this parking from the mulch business. So when you drive in, to the left, you'll see esplanade and white striping, to the right, you'll see white striping, and it guides you all the way to the back.
Okay, I'm confused by your use of the term esplanade, because an esplanade, according to the dictionary, is a, something along the shore, okay? A pathway or a, a paved area for walking along the shore, so put it in plain language, okay?
It's a grass strip mark, yeah, esplanade's along the side of the highway, a grass strip.
Okay.
This is an esplanade over here.
Okay.
That's an esplanade. I'd be walking.
I thought maybe you're gonna put a waterway in there or something, yeah. No, I still don't see it on the plan, but okay. That thing?
Yep, it delineates the.
My little.
It does, esplanade, yeah.
Oh.
And then there's striping here, they're gonna line it, you know, to keep people over there.
Do you have an MDOT permit for this?
We have, yep.
And was that for the entire project or just for those two?
Uh, it was for the commercial business, we booked the update today, he was out. But it's, it's adequate for that, we've made for a commercial access.
Have you run this by the MDOT?
He's having to do it today, but he was out on vacation, since we have made application, he was out on vacation.
I think that's something we would want to have, to make sure that it's okay with the MDOT.
Sure.
Yeah, like you did the, you already have it for the other one, firm way.
Well, we have permits for
Firm, yeah.
Forty of them, actually, but.
Yeah.
So I think, precisely, Mark, we last, we need to de-cop the plans, the submission requirements, and I think we're in a completion process. Not to shortchange, but I'm just trying to make sure we have some structure to start and build, and I think that's the process, right? And so that needed a D O E approval for residents in residential, in attitude.
So only two units are complete, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, I also noticed you're asking where is it, for five year, to do this for five years?
Well, let's go back, that was something I heard from our board during our preliminary discussions, like, when is it going to be finished? When are you going to do it? And, and so trying to have that conversation of how we could actually satisfy, this is what we approved, that's what was, was said, that's what was said in the NOS. How are you going to plan this? Well, the finances of just how you get from point A to B, I would ran the completion of that. So that was, as I said, my suggestion was like, how do we do it? Okay, well, he needs a little bit of time to get his act in, in here to finish that. That would give him a backstop that the plan would, if he had in place, be complete at that time. That would give him a backstop that the plan would, if he in place, be complete at that time. If you, you know, that was, that was approved back, it was last time, so.
So when we approved this project, one of the things we asked you was if you had the financial capacity to, or complete the project. Apparently that's not the case here, right?
Mark, that's, it is the case. We've substantially completed the infrastructure, the project. We put in all the set fix for all the units, all of the, most, ninety-nine percent of the infrastructure is done except for firm way. And I got a price on it and it was a lot of money and that should be absorbed in the next three units.
Were you going to pave that or just dirt?
Pave it. Pave it. And that was the other portion that was absorbing. And I don't mind paying for it, but it makes sense to do it when you're doing three units.
But it's truly a case of by how things unfolded, the plan or the actual use of that is not compliant. We're asked to come and provide evidence of what the change was. We proposed some improvements of demarcation, signage, greenery, white striping that would assist. And so we're following the processes they have for us on here, so.
And that planted island was as much my ideas, it was breaks. I honestly just, it's nice, it breaks things up a little bit going through the entrance and I can put more fruit trees in.
So there are two things here, okay? First of all, using your business driveway, if you will, to access the units, correct?
To access two more duplexes.
Two more duplexes and?
It's accessing the one right now, but yes.
Yeah. Because that was approved.
Prior approval.
Originally, yeah.
Uh, second, second.
Number years ago, yeah.
Nineteen.
And the other thing, you're asking to be able to do that for a five-year period unless you complete construction of unit one, two, or three.
Yes.
Three.
At the completion of unit three, the decision's over.
I don't know if we have the authority to grant that. I don't see anywhere in the ordinance that we do. Frankly, if we're going to do something like that, I'd like to get a legal opinion.
A legal opinion to access?
To condition?
The condition, yeah.
So let's go back. We have, let the code officer say, come back, what are the changes to the plan? And now we want to go for a legal opinion of whether you have the right to do what you asked us to come do. I don't understand the logic. We're here for a site plan revision.
What do you say? No, no, I'm talking about the, the the fact that you want to do this for five years until, okay, the applicant requests these modifications for a limited time only to receive financial assistance to complete the firm way entrance. To accomplish this, we are requesting the board to consider conditions of this modification that would expire and return the subdivision layout to the originally planned format. The terms of the conditions we would like the board to include in its review are as follows. Their entrance may continue to be used with the installed demarcation improvements for a maximum of five years from the date of approval or the completed construction of unit one, two, and unit three, whichever comes first. In all instances, the originally approved access will be completed within five years. That's, that was the part I'm concerned about. It's not whether you can use.
That, okay, well, that's good, let's separate it, that's a suggested condition.
Yeah.
If you don't agree with it, eliminate it, but I don't, I don't think that that's out of your jurisdiction. I've been in this planning board many times and there are conditions all over the place that we don't stop a meeting.
Did you show me in the ordinance where, where?
Conditions of approval?
Yeah.
Well, isn't, isn't this kind of a self-imposed?
That's at the end of the application of subdivision. So, hold on, let me ask this question. At the end of the subdivision application says conditions for approval. And it also says required on the plaque, conditions of approval?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just there, okay.
All right, thanks.
There's nothing specific in the ordinance, yeah.
I mean, it seems to me this is kind of like they're, it's a self-imposed kind of limit. But I guess the way I look at it is, let's suppose this, they came with us and this was the original application. Is there anything in here that's really problematic? And if there isn't, then we wouldn't even need the five years.
Honestly, it doesn't matter to me which way you do it either way.
I mean, is there something here, I mean, we got to get through the process, but what, like, I'd like to move on, like, are we, is it this completeness review? Is that what we're doing? What is this, because it feels like what we're doing here is like some kind of a, it's like some kind of a substantive review on the fly. I just want to get back to the process. Is this, like, where are we in the process? And is this a completeness review? And if it is, then we just go down and make sure it's complete.
True, but doesn't mean we can't ask questions.
Yeah, you usually do that as part of the completeness process, that when you get to the section that you're addressing.
That was the only thing, yeah.
Yeah, okay, good, fine.
I think going into, talking about completeness, I would just like to point out two points you guys can discuss whether you agree this through. If you look the revision subdivision on page seventeen, prostitute Mark read to us at the last meeting. So it's, it's Article eleven, six.
Page seventeen.
Of the subdivision orders.
Article six.
Article six.
Yeah.
So it says, and I said for approved, approved subdivision shall submit at least fourteen days prior. Says the procedures for approval of any plan approval shall be followed. Your preliminary plan, that's preliminary completeness, public hearing, we're in the completeness phase. The submission requirements are listed for revision of subdivisions, which are not the submission requirements for preliminary plan approval, if you follow that logic. And I just say that the power you want to review completeness, the submissions for revisions are in a B. They're not submissions that are listed after the procedures of preliminary plan approval. I think it's all there, but I'm just pointing out the necessity of it is different.
Okay, let's go through completeness review, I guess, right?
Yes.
And you provided us with this checklist.
Yes, but do you want to determine, because I think he's saying the submission requirements on page nine are different than the submission requirements on page seventeen.
Yeah.
Absolutely different, so which one is he supposed to follow?
Because the procedure it references is, so questions that. But the submission requirements are clearly a different section. Submission requirements under the revisions is exactly what we have. Or I could, I think.
I mean, I think we need both, but
I agree.
We should determine which section.
But I also feel like we're cherry picking more things from the wrong category that aren't part of the submission requirements, which we were read out loud last time we were here.
Sounds like we need to revise this too, to make.
Let's save that for another day.
Yeah, well. With Auntie Paula, Auntie's free time, she can work on it.
It's clearly revision to approve.
Yeah. It's a revision to, yeah. I agree with that, it's a revision to the approved plan.
So why wouldn't we be?
Just using that.
Yeah, why wouldn't we be in Article six? What's the reason we wouldn't be?
I think he's, he's agreeing with that. When I put together the
Checklist.
Checklist, I went back to preliminary plan for subdivision approval, like it says to, but instead of just doing A, I included B as well. So B is submissions, but actually it should only be submissions under Article six. So I think he's right.
Yeah, that sounds right. And why do you have so many, a different color?
Well, because some of them belong like on the site plan, so I was trying to kind of group them together so a person could see that a little easier.
Okay, so, yeah, it's a little different than what we used to be used to. Well, I think we just need to do revision. Anybody feel otherwise or?
No.
No.
Yeah, because it makes sense, a limited review to what's being changed as opposed to the whole thing.
So my question is, I'm going through the checklist here. Okay. Copy of the approved plan. Complete and signed copy of the application. That's a yes.
Yep.
Evidence of payment of the application fee.
Yep.
That's on there.
Yep.
But actually, it doesn't say anything about that in here.
Where?
In revisions, under revisions for revision.
Yeah, for revisions, the only thing it says is submit is.
They just submit. Change, yeah.
Yeah.
That money bank rate.
Yeah, that that needs to be fixed. Thanks, guys, for pointing this out.
We've never had any subdivision revisions before.
Yeah, we've never had a subdivision revision before. Okay, so checklist, checklist is useless.
Right, didn't submit an application fee, right?
Okay, there's a fee, it says fee paid, Article twenty-five.
Say that, yeah. I saw that somewhere.
I know, but I guess I'm looking under revisions.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't require that under revisions, no.
Well, I'll take, I'll take a refund, I'm talking great.
Copy of B and none of that stuff, there makes sense, we wouldn't need any of this stuff, because we already have.
How much was it?
Two hundred and fifty bucks.
Really?
That's interesting.
Okay. So, so there is a copy of the approved plan, we know that. We're going to do this on the fly, I guess.
Yeah, we got it, right?
Yeah.
Copy approved plan, two copies of proposed revisions to the town. And then eight copies.
Eight copies.
Reduced to eight and a half.
Did they provide all that, okay?
Yep, there's two large ones and the rest are the small.
And the application shall also include enough supporting information to allow the board to make a determination that the proposed revisions meet the standards of this ordinance. What do you think, do we have that? Looks like it to me.
I think so. I think it is an interesting dynamic here because I think here it's fine, but you could have someone that, I think to me, it's the nature of the, it's how much does it revolve? Like, if it's like a substantial revision to the whole thing, you'd think you'd go through it again. This is not, but if someone's just kind of tweaking something, I could see where you'd do this, you know, you'd do it this way. But I could also see where this could be interesting if somebody comes in and just doesn't, calls it a revision.
I think that all at the end probably allows the sort of discretion.
Figure that out to where.
To boil on all the other.
Hey, oh, is there like a? Oh. Anyway, yeah. Yeah, I think they probably have the miniature completeness.
So all we need to do is make a motion and approve it, that this is complete.
Yeah, just find a complete, schedule a public hearing for September twenty-third.
I said move.
Hold on, hold on. I, I know, I know it's Tuesday night and you have to rush home for your show. They never find anything anyway, do they? Ben still hopes. Okay. Find it complete, okay, it's a public hearing. You know, how about a site visit? Is that something we would want to do now, if we want a site visit?
Had you done that previously?
We did a site visit when we first considered the project, I understand that, but, you know, walking down there, you know, looking at this little thing and then walking down there and seeing exactly what he's trying to do.
Well.
Like I said, it's, I don't know.
The only change is just the.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, to me, the only issue here is safety.
That's.
And it's not really going to be, it's not our problem, it's his problem.
Yeah.
Because it's on his property. The road issue, the MDOT is going to grant that or deny it. And what, and that's the issue we care about. Once it's on his property, you just got to have good insurance.
I'll say the insurance companies all behind it. They think everything we've done so far, they've been happy that some.
It's not a road, it's not like a town, is it, town road?
No, it's not a town road, no. Although there is something in, in site plan regarding safety.
Yeah.
What's the?
Yeah, afford it a maximum safety.
Part it?
It says, afford it a maximum safe ingress interest to that, so we're at a last stop there.
Yeah, it's not, it doesn't really say much.
Safe, safe, I mean, that's, that's apparent, it's wide, some demarcation, the site, the site distance either side is fantastic. That's why you've got a commercial going to.
I mean, now we're getting into the actual subsequent review, but I'm just saying, I, but I think it's complete.
Okay, Ben, go ahead.
My motion still stands.
And I'll.
Well, hold on, hold on, what was the motion then? Please repeat that.
Motion that we approved.
Completeness.
Completeness.
Find it complete.
Find it complete.
Find it complete.
And schedule a public hearing?
Yes.
For?
When was it?
September twenty-third.
September twenty-third, six P M, I've been telling you.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the table to find the application for the revision of the subdivision, or subdivision complete and schedule a public hearing on this for September twenty-third at six P M. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Andrew.
I, I think we're going to want to see that M D O P T permit though.
I'm sure.
Okay, yeah. Make sure they're okay with this as well because it only makes sense. So the person who does that is on vacation, you said?
I was going to try to, but since the last meeting, so it's, we just have to.
Okay. And you think you'd have that by the public hearing?
Correct, yeah.
If you could bring it to that, that'd be great, even though we really need it for discussion about the whole project, okay. Thanks, guys. Did we want a site visit? We don't need a site visit, we decided, right?
I don't think we need a site visit.
Quorum, public meetings.
What's that?
Quorum, public meeting, advertisements.
Yeah.
That's what happens.
If we go, we want to have a site.
You haven't, I got, I collect one, you can have a site appearance.
Really?
Actually, I want to hold it in the fortune this year, but we rebuilt them.
You sell them?
Yeah, I'd sell one.
At the right price.
It's the right price.
Hold on now, we're not making deals, we're still in the meeting, okay?
Well, eighteen seventy-two or eighteen eighty-nine.
Mike, you might want to let him give you, give him a heads up so he can. Mike, you might want to let him give you, give him a heads up, so he can get a burger on the way home.
Okay. Any CEO comments? Put on your list to do something about this subdivision ordinance, okay, thank you. Set date for the next meeting, Ben, you want to do that?
Well, okay, the next meeting will be June.
September ninth. September ninth.
Six P M, Harvey Kelly meeting, if warranted.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is second on the table for the set date for our next meeting, September ninth, six P M, right here, Harvey Kelly meeting room, if warranted. All in favor? Okay. Motion to adjourn? Motion second table adjourned, all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, time, please?
Seven thirty-one.
Seven thirty-one, okay.